Deb's on the phone, everybody else? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Burlington School Board meeting for Monday, August 26th, 2024. Extending the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Okay, good evening again. Bono, the Burlington School District is aspiring challenged through diverse opportunities. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion carries. First up is a vibe update.
Okay, so we all come. Yep, we've got the principal here to share. We can get the technology.
Yep.
Acted.
One of my 900 tabs up here. Get to the break.
So when she accepted the invite today, whatever, she was looking at the details like, you're talking about the first day of school? So once she said yes, then she was just locked in, right? It was like, you couldn't get out of it, so. But it was pretty smooth over, I was over at their school today and they were doing quite a few things, but I appreciate her being here on the first day because I know nobody else would have signed up for it.
I gotta stop sharing so I can present first. Course, technology is awesome when it's working. I might just have to share it like this and go with, roll with it. All right, so my name is Laura Mickey. I'm the principal of the vibe learning program. This is my second year and had a few changes. Love the direction that it's going of, you see my slides off to the side, but you'll get the gist of it. So kind of going with the, you know, unleash the hounds theme with unleash your vibe there. Hoping to roll that on a few T-shirts later on. All right, so besides me, we have 12 teachers on staff. That's K-12. 10 are full-time and we have two that are half-time. One's a half-time special ed and then the other is a half-time business teacher at the high school. We have two office staff. I have an administrative assistant and then we have a registrar. We're still actively looking for a pair educator for the learning center and I talked a little bit more about the learning center later, but it's a, it's a position that a pair educator would be to help students if they want to come in person to work on, on anything. Not specific to vibe, but under the vibe umbrella, we do have the homeschool assistance that's in our building, so I just added just a little bit of information. We have two full-time and one part-time teacher for that and they're serving over 100 kids at this time. So pretty, pretty hearty program there also. So we kind of have it broken up in K-6, a 7, 8, and a 9 through 12. Our 7 through 12 teachers are for the same kids, but because we have different options for high schoolers, I've kind of separated them a little here. K-6 are considered our elementary students, so they're going to have the same teacher for their cores, right? So not going to, even like at Aldo, they, they go around to different teachers, but our K-6 are with one teacher for their cores. We have 25 current full-time virtual students. Every morning, they have a morning meeting from 8:30 to 9:00. They meet with their, their kids daily for their Google meets on their core classes and they also meet weekly for specials at this time. We have in-person optional activities scheduled. They are, this year they're going to be on Fridays. We're kind of scheduling around our early outs. It's just easier to schedule one with the, the teacher schedules, not in the middle. Last year we had them on Thursdays with sharing some teachers with other buildings. We moved them to Fridays, just works out better. But during those in-person activities, they can come in, they can do in-person PE, they can do in-person art, they can do in-person music. They have time to meet with their teachers. They have time to get a little bit of socialization in that some of them really crave. Some just come for that aspect of it. 7th and 8th are going to be really similar, except for the fact that they don't have the same core teacher. We have 19 students right now, just in 7th and 8th grade. I think it was nine 7th graders and 10 8th graders, which is a huge jump from our numbers. I think last year we started off with four 7th graders. We have a morning meet every day also for them. They're required to meet with each of their teachers twice a week. So instead of meeting with every single teacher every single day, it's kind of just mixed around. We build a Google schedule, Google meet schedule for them so that they're getting on periodically throughout the day to help them pace themselves a little bit, but they still have other times where they are working at home by themselves. They're expected to be a little bit more, you know, self-reliant instead of just having to have that teacher with them all the time. They also have PE, art, music virtually every week and still the optional in-person, which they can come in the twice a month. We, we do hope to plan more field trips throughout the year. Last year we made a trip to the recycling center and we had a huge turnout. The kids loved it and just through different scheduling, it just didn't happen. So we hope to schedule a couple more throughout the year. I know homeschool does a great job of, of doing field trips, so we hope to make a connection with them just to help them, help us, help them, help us to have some more ideas. And then our 9th through 12th grade is, is where it gets a little bit confusing, but we have a lot of interest in the program. So we have, I should have maybe put it first, but we have vibe virtual, which is just the kids are at home, they're taking all their classes virtually through us and we have about, I said approximately 46. I have 10 applicants. I seriously got one five minutes ago, another applicant. So we're sitting at about 46 that we've approved and have schedules. We have another 27 students that are doing vibe flex. With vibe flex, they're going to be taking some classes in person at the high school. They're going to go for art class or woodworking or one of the countless amazing opportunities we have with our, our CTU program. Or they might like a specific class or specific teacher and they take those there. So we have a student that's taking, I think it's a specific reading class that they wanted to take there. So they're, they're going to take that there and the rest of the classes then are going to be with vibe. And then the high school is piloting this year a program called VHS Boost. And in these classes, students are, are going to be assigned a vibe class, so they're going to be staying at the high school, but they're going to utilize our classes on Canvas to be able to hopefully have some students, so a senior isn't going, a senior maybe didn't pass a class as a freshman, so instead of going to a classroom with other freshmen, they might be taking it with vibe. So, but they have the same requirements and they're giving them also the classes might be full. So just another way for them to take a class that they need to graduate. At this point, this is the most flux number because they were still finishing schedules today and moving things around, but we at this time have approximately 73 students that are taking our classes at the high school. So, and I, I know I talked about applications today, but I put that there. I have at least 10 applications that came in just today for vibe. That would be the virtual or the flex at the high school level and I'm pretty sure I have three or four sitting in there for K through 8. So we hope to get them processed in the next day or two so that they can get started.
Clarifying question.
Yeah.
So when I see the numbers there, so I see 27 and 48, that's not the 73 you're talking about, even though they're the exact same numbers?
It's additional 27, 46, do they make 72?
So they're not the same?
No.
So two 7s and seven 3s?
Yeah, coincidence.
All right.
Crazy. Oh, good.
Well, I'm just, I want to make sure that, because 144, yeah, they're being serviced because you could think there was only 73 in total.
Yeah. No, good, good question. And they have the same requirements to meet at least twice a week. They, they have stuff on Canvas to do every day, but they are required to meet twice a week. They can meet other times, they just call and request times. The teachers will schedule a meeting with them. They are trying something different. Last year we had some in-person students in our building at the high school level and this year we do not. So we're going to make an optional drop-in time at the high school or for the high schoolers from 9:00 to noon on Fridays and that's just going to be every Friday. There's no Google meets scheduled anyway. All the teachers will be on hand and they can go in and get that help. And I, I think this might be a huge thing because we had some kids that didn't want to come every day, but then we had kids in our building and you could come to the learning center, but it didn't always work out. So it's just really focused on that, hey, I didn't get this math assignment. I tried it online, you know, I went back and watched the Google meet and I still didn't get it, you know, I'm going to hop in on. And they don't take appointments, it's just a drop-in style to be able to do every Friday. And I think the teachers are excited about it too. I mean, they're all like, so when is that? Like, we're going to start it this Friday, you know, we're, we're going to start it right off and just, I think hopefully we get to a point where the kids want to come in, but it might be even just us the first couple of times, like, hey, reminder, come in if you need help and putting it in the announcements and things like that. We do also have the learning center, which I said, we're trying to hire somebody for that still. It's open to 7th graders through 12th graders daily, open from 8:30 to 3:30. We do have breakfast and lunch available. It's, it's, it's more of a drop-in also. They don't have to come for the entire day. They could come from, you know, 10 to 12 if they just want a couple of hours to work. We've really just promoted it as, hey, for today, my home, maybe my internet went out today and I need to play sit with internet or maybe I just, I can't focus at home, there's too much going on. Can I, I'm going to come in and work. So we have that, we have the lunches. If they're there for breakfast, they can also have a breakfast. We do have a maker space started. It's, it needs to be better organized and we need to work on advertising it and finding ways to schedule students to come in. But we, we got the grant from the Greater Burlington Partnership. We got it, we received the money at the beginning of last year. We worked on purchasing things, so we've got a lot of things purchased and we just need a way to organize it and better advertise it so we can get students in utilizing it. Because there's some really cool things. We've got, you know, 3D, we got a 3D printer, we got 3D writing pens, we've got tons of science kits. We've just got a lot of things and we just gotta, we gotta work out the kinks on how we can better get students in to utilize those. Just, I, I just added a slide because I think that when you're thinking of a vibe student, there's, there's lots of different possibilities of why a student chooses vibe. But we, we are, we're attracting students from other places. We have a, an agreement with Fort Madison and Keokuk. At this time, we only have four students from each. I know we have other interests and I, I, I know that others are trying. It's just, once again, that applying and then getting in. We have four students from each Fort Madison and from Keokuk. We have 10 students that have joined the vibe program after open enrolling from neighboring districts. So we have students coming in and then I know that we've had students that are returning to our district that had previously been open enrolled out to another because they want to partake in this program. So lots of interest, lots of good things going on. We are working really hard with the high school to really promote those, you know, hey, you can still take these intensive classes at the high school if you want to take that welding class or whatever. And I think that will bring a lot of students that maybe want to do a virtual, but then they also want to, you know, do those hands-on type of classes. So just trying to bridge that and communicate that and letting everybody know what we all have to offer and I know that, like I said, I had a application five minutes before. I walked in today, so I, I know that there's going to be more coming through and I'm excited for where the program can continue to go.
So just to finish up, I would say unless there's a slide eight.
No, that's it.
Okay. I would say, you know, Laura did an amazing job last year, you know, coming over to us and, you know, really took over, you know, a great leadership role, but yet a communication role with her staff. And so I feel like we went through some financial changes because of the, the dollars going away from COVID dollars and Esther dollars and so those kind of things. We had to transition, but yet still meeting the needs of the faculty and she had numerous means with her staff to try to explain to them why we had to make the change, but yet they could have a voice in what that change looked like and there were several versions, went back and forth, you know, and I give her a lot of credit. And, and she has a very good understanding of, you know, you know, we've got to be able to spend the dollars where the students are and so we can only spend as many dollars as there are students at that program. But I think we came up with a pretty good plan. I threw a lot of credit to her working with, with us last year and, and at-risk dollars should go towards students who are at risk and some of these kids are at risk. Some could be successful in the school. They could, they can make their way, but this is definitely a better plan for them and better opportunity for them. So got to balance that and, you know, I've appreciated her leadership over last year and I think she brings, you know, some good feedback, but yet understanding the balancing of both the district office and, you know, running a, a program like this. So she does a good job. So I can be up probably for questions if you guys have for her.
I have a few questions. So you, you kind of touched on it, but I'm not sure you answered your question, my question. What, what is it that attracts the students or parents to this program?
That's a great question and we've asked, and that's usually when we, we, when a student applies, especially if they've never been with us, we'll bring them in for an intake meeting. That's the first thing that we ask, you know, why vibe? Why, why do you want to be in this program? And we have, we have a huge range of answers. A lot of times it's anxiety. My kid goes to school and I get a phone call within an hour because they want to come home because other students or too many students or, or things like that. We get some of them, my kid's getting picked on every day, it's just an issue. I just want them to have a distraction-free chance to be able to, to learn. We have some students that maybe border between wanting to choose, I, I would say more of our elementary if they would, or were thinking maybe a homeschool type of situation, but they wanted to, you know, they have our curriculum with this, they have our teachers that are actually, you know, giving the instruction. So it's a good balance between that because they still are heavily involved at that elementary level. You, you couldn't, you couldn't be successful as a kindergarten doing vibe without a family support, right? The kid's not going to be able to read what's on, on the screen. So it, it just depends on the grade level, it depends on the thing, but that is the first question we ask, you know, why vibe? Why do you want to, to do this? Why do you want to be here? And then we just talk about ways to make them successful then, so.
So we do have K through 12?
We do.
In the program?
Yep.
And from those people that are open and rolling in or coming back, let's say, is it because of the quality of the instruction or the diverse opportunities? Or, or is it because nobody else offers this quote-unquote "school from home"?
I think it's a, I think it's a, a bunch of things. I think that, you know, all of the great things we're offering at the high school is a huge draw. And I do think that some of it is, is the virtual, being, being, having the virtual program in Burlington as an option. I, I think that the ability to also, like I said, flex, right? You can do some virtual and you can do some at the high school is something that more and more kids have didn't realize that they could do and like that option too.
Is there a limit to the size of it?
Yes. We've talked a lot about that just with our size reduction. We try to limit, we, we try to protect our teachers to not have more than, in high school, what is it, 7th through 12? We, we have a cap of, just working on that. We're not quite sure with having the boost in there and the flex, just exactly how to work that yet. But yes, we're trying to not to make it an overload. I don't want my teachers to have, you know, 300 students because then we're not able to give that individual instruction.
So comment at the high school, if I was teaching five grades at the high school, I would have on average 25 kids in a class. And so there's 125 kids. Well, if I'm at the virtual, I definitely can handle 125, but probably a little more than that because it's virtual, there's other things to come with the classroom, but not, they can't handle 250. So where do we find that happening? So we really are, we kind of have a cap number for enrollment and then we, as a person applies, well, what are you actually looking for? They're just looking for two classes and then the flex, so it's really a lot of choice on her as far as that. But we have, we don't want to overdo them also, right? Where they don't have the time for all of our virtual kids, but it's a balance. I'd say there is a hard number that we have that we use.
Utilizing existing teaching staff?
Right. Because we're, 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 the staff that we have is what we have because anything we get over a certain limmer, it's adding a quarter of a teacher or half. It's not economically, it's not a good choice for us, whatever, and at this point, so that's why we kind of.
I guess I was curious if it was viable economically at, at scale, but it doesn't sound like it is. Seems like it should be because you don't have any more facilities to provide.
It's just the teacher. It'd be like, I use the example of if I want to get in the nursing school at Iowa, they take 108 people for the nursing school. That's what they have, that's the amount of staff they have, they take 108 kids. That's kind of what we're doing. We have this much staff so we can, we can take this many kids into our program. If it gets so, we have so many on the waiting list, then we have to reevaluate because then it would be adding a multi-level teacher. They could teach two different subjects and things like that.
So when you do your intake and you've got a balance between, say, a dozen kids on the waiting list, do you try to take the ones that are more at risk?
They haven't come to that situation yet, so that's something that I guess we will discuss more.
Make a choice at this point.
Correct, yeah.
You talked about balance, so I was just kind of curious what that, what that was because it sounds like there are kids that take this that probably would be successful in a regular classroom and then just for whatever reason choose not to. Is that right?
Yeah, I would say that there are some. I mean, I've got some in my head right now that I can think of that would, were successful at the high school and are still flexing, just want that more flexible schedule. Because we have, we do have a few that want to work more earlier in the day, so our schedule is a little bit more flexible. They can, they can work more hours.
Some have jobs.
Yep.
Have a job that they just, and then they could do their, they can get here for a couple of classes, but then they go to work.
Care potential.
Yep.
Any number of things. And, and I would say as we get our waiting lists going, the attendance, just like it's important in the regular classroom, will be a factor for someone holding the seat. Because I can't hold a seat if you're just not even attending virtually when I have someone else or wants to get into the class. So there would be protocols and it's not like we would drop somebody the next day, but there'll be warning letters and probation and all that kind of stuff so they know. But at some point, we do have to open the seat up if you're not attending.
Sorry, I'm monopolizing. One more question. Are there any other school districts doing anything like this in our region or in our state?
In the region, Corey?
In the region, no.
No.
As you said, to the way, sorry. In the region, no. There are other, there are other virtual programs across the state. We developed this initially and kind of a big piece of the continued goal and purpose of our particular program is some of that in-person and flexible, flexible options and giving kids the opportunity to come. So a lot of the other virtual programs that are available to kids in Iowa are truly just virtual only and they all take kids from really anywhere in the state. So, you know, if we were that type of program, we might have a kid from Council Puffs in our program. And that's really not the type of program we ever intention, it wasn't our intention to build that program and we've been really purposeful and intentional in kind of maintaining our, our regional status. And also as Warren mentioned, those collaborations with the neighboring districts currently, Keokuk and Fort Madison, we've had a few others that maybe occasionally have a kid or two and it varies a little bit year to year just because they're smaller districts. But our goal was to partner with them, not compete with them. Our goal was to have that regional program and to have something that really was, is within a distance where we can still have those in-person opportunities, still have those connections, still have those open houses, still have those, those opportunities to really be more of a blended program than a true fully virtual program now. Again, many, some of our students really truly are just full virtual, but they have that opportunity.
One of our Keokuk students comes for in-person things though. I mean, so it is close enough still to drive them in.
It's interesting that the student has the choice. They want to be full virtual, that is a viable option. If they want to mix it up and come put hands on with the CTE program and this for that.
I think that's come through multi-years of just kind of just trying to navigate what's meeting all the needs of the students. It's been, you know, there's been trial and error and I think we've landed on a pretty good spot this year.
It's intriguing to me, the boost, I guess, program, and maybe all one of the three of you can, seems to me that would help boost our, our improved graduation rate. Because you mentioned kids who, they haven't got, they haven't got the math credit or they haven't got this credit and it just hasn't worked for them to try to do credit recovery or make it up or just for whatever reason, and this gives them that option C that perhaps they could do that. So that's kind of exciting to see a different way of trying to increase.
That class is really designed around finding those students who have already not been successful in the classroom and this is an opportunity for them to take it a different way to see if for some reason it connects. It's really not, doesn't mean they're, with scheduling conflict, it wouldn't be something else, but right now the focus is on those seniors and then juniors. That's kind of how they're protocol down to find out which kids want to enroll into those periods. Because again, in a perfect world, we only want to do that class would be about 15 kids in the class.
Sure.
Right now we've got a few more because everybody's flooding back in to start the year and we're building, but that's something you'll probably see a steady dive because that way the teacher has enough that she can ring and Terrell.
Terrell.
Terrell, thank you, I was saying Terrell. She can, you'll be able to work with students during that time, but you get 30 kids in there, she's not going to be able to do that. So I think 15 is our number for that. So it doesn't take off like.
Looking at unique ways to try to fulfill a need there and I think that's kind of cool.
Well, instead of a study hall, second period is a boost. So you're not, you're not leaving, you know, because then you've got third period government. You're already at the building, you're on the campus, you're on the grounds.
No, I'd say a non-vibe answer would be, high school is really discouraging, the, the study halls unless students are really, really have a need for it because they have A-class, they really want full loads for all of the kids. And so I know they're really pushing that hard this year.
Do we have a classroom at the high school that's dedicated to?
We do have a classroom. Yep, we have a classroom right off of the guidance office and, and it connects into the library so that if kids wanted to step out of there in the library, they could work in the library. So that's kind of the thought as, now we get through the remodel, they'll be, just like every other, just like every other classroom, they're going to move around a little bit, but eventually that's a little bit of the design too. Some of those small classrooms that you'll see attached around the library will be those areas where students would be able to work.
The high school's getting remodeled.
I have a question about drop-in.
When you say the terminology drop-in, so I've got a kid that's enrolled in vibe and I want them to come at 9:30. It's, it's during the drop-in hours. Do I need to call you the day before? Or I can literally decide at 9:20, I'm going to drop you off at 9:30?
Yep, yep, yep. We need to have someone sign into the office so we can keep track of who's there.
Sure.
Notifies the teachers that, hey, this student come, you know, is in, they want, you know. We haven't, we haven't done it yet, so I don't know if we're going to have all the teachers just in the learning center, but that's where we're going to house them until either teachers come get them or, or maybe we walk them down. Something, it really depends on the number of students we have. I don't want, you know, 50 students to be walking in and be like, hey, how, good luck, find your class. So that's our plan right now is to house them in the learning, they come in, check in. Notification will go out to the teachers that, hey, so-and-so's here and they'll come down and, and get them. And then after that, we could just walk them down if need be, so.
Have you ever been to vibe lately? We did add some security measures over there. We had a new camera. We actually moved the door around to the front part of the building by Madison Road. And so, Madison Road, right?
Madison Avenue, but yeah.
I knew I was wrong somewhere. So, but, so the secretary can see the door, they buzz in, they see them walk right to them compared to the old door would come down from the other side. So that was an adjustment that Laura advocated for and I think it's fully functioning now and it's a lot better.
Thank you for your leadership and thank you Corey and Rob for your support for that. I just think it's genius and, and I think it's been a long time coming. Maybe COVID forced our hand, but we learned and we stuck with it and I think that's awesome. And that's leadership in the, in the state frankly, to make that work. So I'm, I'm excited for great.
If we're including students, we'd otherwise not be going. I think we're doing the right thing, we need to keep up.
That's great.
Following our mission statement to A.T. with this program, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Have a great rest of your week.
Next up is the public hearing for the elementary security project. So at this time I'll open, sorry, I missed something.
Public comment?
Oh, public comment. The overwhelming number of public here. First we've got a public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak this evening, please come forward.
So many wanting to talk today.
No, we love when the public comes.
They're busy, it's the first day of school too for them.
That's true.
It is, yes.
So we'll close public comment, then we'll move to the public hearing for the elementary security project. This time I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the elementary security project, please do so at this time. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public hearing for the elementary security project. Next up, our student representative report. We have a full house of our student representatives tonight. Welcome, Lee, welcome, Will. Good to see you both. How was day one?
Good.
How many more to go?
179.
No more day ones. This was the answer, it was a trick question.
I have sports. All sports have started. Football and volleyball had scrimmages at Fall Fest last Friday. Fall Fest, we introduced all of the student athletes through all of our fall sports at Bracewell. Football's first game is this Friday. Boys and girls across the country have their first meets the first week of September. VHS Golf has had three meets so far. And then I'd like to say senior Tomas Rescone has placed in all three meets and has won two out of the three of them.
I have that the first day of school was today. The first girls' swim meet is tomorrow at United Township. Musical auditions are September 3rd and 4th, right after school in the choir room. Girls volleyball has a game today at Galesburg. And girls wrestling is doing open mats on Sundays 6th to 8 p.m.
Did everybody fight in the classrooms today or was it kind of like?
I struggled.
I struggled, yeah. I had, I don't know if you guys remember the summer when we had a presentation on IJAG.
Yes.
To the high school, so I was, I wanted to have first period government and it didn't work out, so. But I wanted to be there for a spirit, so I worked with Ms. Levinson to try to find a class that would work for me for first period. And so I decided to take IJAG. So I signed up for that first period and it's out in the cottages. And I'd never been in the cottages and I did not know how to get there, so. That was a bit of a struggle for me this morning, but other than that, everything was fine.
Awesome. I'm good.
I couldn't find my advisory, I had no clue who Mr. Gar was. So I was like asking everybody what, who he was and like how to get there.
A lot of new teachers, a lot of new students and a lot of miscommunication as every first day of first year goes. But I think they got to that pretty quickly, you got everybody sorted out once.
It always goes better on day two.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a lot better than day one.
When I was over there today, over a couple of times today, the students were trying to help other students, but the new, the numbering system is a complete change.
Yes.
And so, you know, that's a four-digit number.
Yeah, thousands now.
So people just can't, in reference, they can't just say, oh yeah, I've been in that room over there, it's right there. They're literally like, I don't think I'd know where that's at. And they were trying to help the younger kids or, you know, somebody that was lost. So students were trying to do the right thing, which was what I, that was what I saw when I was there. But it was, it is very confusing, the, the scoring of the, it'll be perfect when it's all done.
Yeah.
Because it makes total sense, the rhythm of it will make complete sense once the entire building is done.
Have you moved on from trying to steer the freshmen to the third floor?
Um, yeah, yeah. I, I tried to be as, I tried to be as helpful as possible today.
Oh, I still do it.
Oh. It's a rite of passage. Yeah, I mean, you would pick based off.
It has been going on a long time.
You'd pick based off the room numbers that there's a 20th floor, so.
Valid point. I've, I asked where my advisory classroom was, so I said the number and someone was, because it's like 1,500 something and they're like, yeah, it's on the first floor. I'm like, yeah, I got that, thanks.
Was there a reason we did that?
Yep, it's all fire code, it's all fire code stuff, it's all to make people be able to find the locations, yep.
And there had to be reasons, so.
So did your schedule for IJAG say like C.O.T.T.-
C.O.T.T. 6-26, I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what helped me out, otherwise I would have had no idea. I asked my counselor and she said, I have no idea where that room is. Because it didn't show, on her end, it didn't show the C.O.T.T.
Yes, it just had the 6-1.
The dash after that, yeah.
43 or whatever, yeah.
So I, but when I looked it on my end, I saw the C.O.T.T. and that's, I asked somebody for, like, I know this is in the cottages, I don't know where to go from there, but yeah.
All right, thank you so much, anything else? Perfect, thanks, appreciate you being here. Next up is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of $3,495,612.53 and unpaid bills in the amount of $308,691.10. P-card purchases, BMO Bank in the amount of $131,113.88 and gifts in the amount of $1,375.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhart, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Any abstaining?
Abstain.
So noted. Moving into items for discussion. First up is the child and adult care food program agreement. Greg, have you got this one?
Yeah, so this would be very similar to our food and nutrition reimbursements that we have just as part of our regular education through the Department of Education. You can participate with their reimbursement program also for our early childhood center. So this is just the annual agreement application with the Department of Education for our early childhood food program. It does provide roughly about $40,000 to the early childhood center, which is very helpful.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the child and adult care food program agreement. A second.
A motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is the elementary security update, sticking with Mr. Reynolds, what do you have for us?
Yeah, so this was, we had submitted for bids, I guess for the, if you recall, first time we submitted bids for the elementary renovations to the entrances. No, we had received one bid, which was twice the budget. So it was rejected at the recommendation for the architect. So we made some revisions to it, sent it out for a second bid. Unfortunately, we only received one bid again from the same contractor. They, despite the revisions, they only reduced their bid about $10,000. So it still exceeds our budget by twice what the architect estimates it should be. So the recommendation is that we reject it again. There, there are several, if you read the architect letter, there's several reasons why we think a short window to try and get it done. And the fact that they're saying the three buildings are really complicated. So our recommendation is to reject it. We do kind of have a plan to try and revise it, get this done. We are committed to getting these done, but we just also need to work within what we think is a reasonable budget for the project. So the recommendation is to reject it and then we're visiting with Ray to, to find a good way to get these done, so.
Yeah, I think I would say, just if I could follow with Greg. So, you know, I, they, everyone in the district knows security is a big priority for me. So just, you know, even looking at this or whatever, it's frustrating for me if this has been delayed at all. But we, I think the label of it is something that's misleading all the way. We have secure entrances in all of our buildings. This is a remodel of our entrances, you know, the flow of it as they come out. We literally, no one has access, you walk into the door, you're seen on the camera, nobody gets buzzed in without having approval. There is, there's certain levels of flow and entrances they have and that's why we're recommending the change because we know it works better for office and everything once you get the building. But we don't have unsecure entrances at our buildings right now. And I only say that because I took a question at a different meeting that I was at and somebody asked for that question. And so for the public that's listening, we do have secure entrances at all of our buildings. We just are trying to do a remodel of the, the entrance flow as they come into the office. That's what we're trying to do. And I think that in our hurriedness, trying to get this done, because we're trying to get everything done, the, the short six-weeks bid that we put on this one just didn't work for us. And so by doing that, we heard the message from the contractors or the lack of people who are out there do the work. And so we'll send it back out again with a little more flexibility in the timeframe. And then I think we may do it individually, just building by building. But I do think that the timeframe was the biggest part of it. We just, in the summer, there were nobody available and then just even six weeks in, they're still finishing up other projects that they have throughout southeast Iowa and they couldn't commit to it, so. But if you take any questions.
At the end of the day, our buildings are secure.
They are secure.
This is just their enhancement to what we already have.
It's so different, we added Raptor, we took another level, this is one other level for these three buildings. It is something that is going to happen this year, it's going to happen. We just, we just had, we have to be good stewards of the dollars too, right? And so we understand that, but it's going to happen.
And this wouldn't jeopardize any grants or anything for security? All right, I move we reject all bids on the elementary security project.
I will second.
Do a motion and a second, any additional comments or questions?
Question for Greg and Rob, when are we going to see this put out again? Do we have a timeframe estimate?
Yeah, we're, I'd say we're going to visit with the architect and develop a good plan. It may not even have to go out for a bit, maybe a competitive vote versus a bid if we just do one building. So that will expedite some things. Biggest thing is just trying to get communication out and get interest from the contractors, find a good timeframe that works for them. So I think that was, that, as Rob mentioned, that was kind of the challenge. They sent this out three weeks ago, the, the contractor was looking at it going, oh gosh, I got to start in three weeks and be done in six. That is, so we'll have to, you know, so we're talking with some of the contractors and, you know, saying, what would work? What do we need to do to make this work?
Our architect is in next week and so he's staying for the program at Aldo. Right, and so it's an opportunity for us to visit with him in the afternoon. So rather than have him come for a separate meeting, we just thought that would be a perfect day for us to talk to him.
Okay, so we'll see about this and.
Yes, like I said, this is not something, this is on the front burner for me. As Greg knows, I walked onto his office, he's constantly there talking about, how can we do this economically? But also, how can we do this, right? So continue to, to look at those avenues.
Makes sense, okay.
And I appreciate you guys battling back and forth on this because we do want to be good stewards of the dollar. We want to make this happen, so I appreciate your hard work and dedication in seeing this gets done.
Very much so.
Good problem for southeast Iowa, there's a lot of work for people to do down here.
Sure.
You know, that's the other, when you look at it the other way, it's like people are working non-stop, whatever. There's a lot of construction going on, which is good. It's just, it's hurting us just in the timeframe of what we wanted, so we're going to have to accommodate that.
Taking one bite at a time, I think.
Yep, I think that's.
Might be wise.
We actually probably thought that the, that the three pieces together was going to make it easier and actually it looks like it's not, so we're going to try it the other way.
Sure.
Our students aren't at any, at any risk, so. All right, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? That motion carries. Next up, my favorite things I can think of. We are talking about IASB legislative priorities so that we can pick our four, top four and forward those on to IASB for consideration at the state level. And. Anybody want to jump in with their top four? Three or four, just, it was four, so.
I had three, yeah.
Well, I figured, not that you said three, but I figured we, we always have one hanging out there, so. I, I put in two, three and four. Two, three and four? I can probably pick a different one with that, but those are my top.
Number minor.
They'll probably add that afterwards. Well, what did you have?
I like one, it emphasizes student achievement. I remember that was one of our goal areas that everyone agreed on. Two, also has a lot going for student achievement, also the high-quality teacher workforce for student achievement. So one, two, six and seven.
I did one, four and eight. I'm showing you the numbers of mine. I did student achievement, mental health and school safety.
So the mental health.
And school safety, yeah. So you have four and eight and one.
Four and eight.
And I had two, four, seven and eight.
And I had one, five, one, four, five and seven.
One, four, five and seven. So I have four as five. And then number one has four. Then we have a three-way tie between two, seven and eight. And a three-way tie between three, five and six.
Looks like the top ones are one, four, seven and eight. Scan later. We got the.
I have two has three.
I have three eights and three sevens.
Seven and eight. Three, number two has three.
Yeah, seven, there's seven, there's seven.
Right.
There's eight, there's eight, there's eight.
Right, they have, yep.
Four fours.
Right.
And four ones.
Yeah, four, one.
Four, seven and eight, looks like the top four.
What about two? Two was said three times.
Two, yeah.
And seven was said three times and eight was said three times. So four and one are definitely our priorities. And we have a.
The rest of the three-way tie.
Three-way tie and then a three-way tie.
You know what, there's no bad answers to any of these. I don't know if you guys looked at them, it's like, I actually call on them. Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
What were the, what were the three-way tied ones?
Um, the three-way tie would have been.
Eight, seven, two and. Three?
Uh, two, seven and eight.
Two, seven and eight, yeah. Right, the three-way tie. Oh, yeah, okay.
I was trying to four.
So one and four were tied for first, is that right?
No.
Yes, 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 okay. One and four were tied for two. Seven, eight, two, seven, eight.
One is the safe place and the other one, seven is about the, about the, or it was about financial.
Yeah, so.
State aid. State aid.
Yeah.
Seven is.
Yeah, seven is a supplemental state aid.
Yeah.
And then eight was, every student deserves to learn, and every staff member deserves to work in a safe environment.
Two is high-quality teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Of course. So we have high-quality teacher, we have state aid, and we have every student deserves to learn.
No, it's, it's more about the safe and secure environment, is what it's more about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Safe environment.
Every student and staff deserves to learn in a safe and secure environment.
Yep.
All three of those are. I will only, I'll just say number two in my mind is one, because we just came through a period where we had such a shortage of teachers. Hopefully we're coming out of that, but we could easily go back to it.
Talks about teacher recruitment and licensure, professional development, retention.
Yeah, of course, yep.
And we've developed some pretty cool programs here, you know. So, but I'm not gonna, I mean, all three of those are great, so. How do you argue?
Pressure just.
How do you go over one over the other?
And, you know.
Well, we have to pick two of those three.
We have to pick two of the three.
So which one don't, which is the least?
Seven's advocating for funding, supplemental state aid.
Greg, can we send four in a bonus?
I would put safety before state aid personally. I mean, I'd put teachers and safety above state aid. So mine out of number two, seven, and eight, my votes would be two and eight.
I would agree.
I would agree, 'cause I think, I'm obviously state aid is fairly.
I'm 100% behind two.
Okay.
That's easily.
Two and eight.
State aid is not something we have to worry a whole lot about.
Right.
And if they do, it's gonna affect every difference in state.
Right.
Well, potentially.
So one, two, four, and eight?
One, two, four, and eight would be correct. I had a nice little spreadsheet done, and I left it on the kitchen table, so that it would be easier instead of my notebook, so, you know.
This is my nice spreadsheet.
But it works. One, two, four, and eight.
So to highlight that is, we believe that literacy is the belly block for student achievement and success, and.
We believe that a high-quality teacher workforce is necessary for student achievement.
And number four. We believe that student educator staff mental health needs must be addressed and supported to improve student achievement, reduce dropout rates, and maintain a high-quality workforce.
And then number eight is, we believe that every student deserves to learn, and every staff member deserves to work in a safe and secure environment.
It's not that the others aren't important.
Right. They make us choose.
I think those make sense. Those align pretty well with student achievement, retention.
And they align a lot with our work session that we have.
I think it fits.
Yeah.
So would there be a motion for that?
I approve numbers one, two, four, and eight. Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Perfect. Thank you for that. See the board, that's all.
Of course it does. Great job.
Craig, do we have to do it? Or is that later? We can do that later, get the sign out, but be thinking about it, though. We leave the board, we need to select the legislative delegate for the ISB conference.
I'm prepared to ask for a motion.
I thought that was included.
Every board member just felt like that. Except one.
I.
She's not gonna work.
There's one.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, I'm pretty sure that, that's right. You know, it's not here. It's nominated.
Yeah.
I would.
So we could do that later, so, okay, I didn't know that. Attach it to these, whatever.
Oh, yeah, I thought we had to do it tonight.
Okay, all right.
Okay, next up, substitute employee pay rates.
Sure.
Okay. So I just have those here. Lacey is actually, she's in district right now, but she's doing district work, obviously. I'll say that. So we looked at the sub-rate for our positions that were presented to you in general. It looks like we increased by 75 cents on all of our subrates. We tried to look at a balance. We, last year we did a little different ratios for each one, because we were trying to get them to balance on what the starting pay is. We look at the starting pay for the position, and then we try to balance off of that to what the sub should make. And then we also, you know, Greg has figures from districts that are around us and what their pay is too, so that helps us balance in there. But we, 75 cent raise, we feel good about. Sub-teacher rate, is that on this one too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sub-teacher rate, we're looking to increase that by $10, which would then increase the half-day by $5 to 160 and 80. Our long-term sub is for somebody that's in there, you know, up to 15 days. We have an extended term sub, which is somebody who's there 16 to 60 days. We didn't change those rates. We left those at 190, 195. The vacancy sub is that sub, we have four of them this year where we could not find teachers, and so their plan is unless we have a mid-year hire or someone moved into the area, that person is our, our teacher in that position for the year. So they're doing everything, and that one, we did think we should increase by $10 to $210 a day. And we have in the past offered those people benefits, Greg?
Yes.
In those positions, just in the vacancy sub positions. Because of, you know, what they're doing, what they're serving our district.
Vacancy sub, a long-term or extended term?
Not the long-term, extended term, just for the vacancy subs, because they're here the whole year. The benefit, you know, when we say we have four teachers that are in those long, those vacancy subs for us, those people have been in our district teaching in many classrooms. They know our kids, they're very successful, they have relationships. I mean, they, they know our stuff, they just, they're just not certified at the complete level at the state level. And so, you know, whether they haven't had the time because of their family requirements or whatever, I wouldn't want to speak for any of them, but I just say they're very valuable and very good people for our district.
Do you have any trouble filling these sub positions?
We do, we do. Just like we, you know, the turnover and the rate, you know.
I just said it's still less than $40,000 a year. 190 days and 210.
And two, yeah.
Still under $40,000.
So that's kind of what we looked at too. We looked about, I was saying 90%, but we were in the, you know, trying to figure out what the starting pay is for a teacher, and then working its way back from there.
No, I see the logic, it's, I mean, obviously it would be nice to be more, but we can't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was there a motion for that? Did we get too far in the discussion?
I'll move to approve the subrates.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McVay. Any additional comments or questions for that?
This is something we kind of look at every year.
Yeah.
Pretty much, I know for, oh, sometime we're gonna do it every year, but I think we kind of are.
Kind of have our.
Necessity, yeah.
Hearing no questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, and that motion carries. Next up is the childcare professional attendance bonus. Am I not seeing that one in front of me, Greg?
Do you have a copy of that, Greg? Well, I can speak to it for sure.
Yeah.
So the, I would tell you that, but I thought we were looking to move the, no, that's not, that's, this is the childcare professional.
Childcare professional.
Oh.
Yes. And so, because we were talking about the rate of pay for this one too.
Is mine here?
Is that included?
It is not in our board packet.
It is not in it.
We may have to table this one.
So you have the information.
I would prefer to table it, since we don't have any information on it.
I didn't catch that.
I didn't catch it either. Apologize, I did not catch that when the board packet came out, but that was missing. Sorry.
I did not either.
Well, let me tell you just a little bit about it, so people in the community know what we're talking about. We are talking about our childcare employees. We're talking about bringing back the rate of pay for our childcare to bring it on the same level as our, what our associates are making in our other buildings, which would be probably a 90 cent increase. And I know you'll see it the next time, but that's.
What's the next time?
It is the next time.
But it's not in here either.
But it's not in here either.
No.
No, neither one of those items are in there?
They're not in here, so, so, okay, so, but two-part. The 90 cent increase, we're bringing that hourly rate up, just to make sure we're staffing our childcare center and to recruit, because if you could make 90 cents more, so it's not to take people away from other buildings for us, but we need to be on the same level for those positions. So we'll be bringing that for you. And then the attendance bonus is something that we're using around the same lens as far as what we have in our special ed classrooms, where we have the tenants, the same exact bonus structure, where 90% of tenants would qualify you for a bonus, but it would be, it's less than the special ed. Now, that is a general fund dollar, but that would come out of the childcare, which isn't our normal general fund, it's out of our childcare balances, which we have, we have extras, I'm looking for overages or care over. We can handle that increase. And so, and we have different protocols, and if I think about from a standpoint of, if I have a classroom, elementary classroom, if a teacher doesn't come, it's the worst-case scenario, is I can split those two classrooms and all 60 kids stay at school. In the childcare, if I don't have enough employees, the child, they have to go home, because I have a certain amount of people I can have in each classroom and with an employee, and so I have to close classrooms. So we need to have some incentive to be able to make sure that those classrooms are there, or make this job a little bit more appealing for some people outside of our community that may want to apply and come to us. We're currently staffed, but we're just right on that bubble, where, and I may have shared, like, if we, we don't want to close it, but, and when I say close it, we'd be closing like ones, or twos, or threes, or fours. It's not like we close the entire building, but there are criteria that we're held to outside of the Board of Education, that would be the mandates that we are, we cannot have class. And so that's why we talk about the attendance, and instead of, in theory, we kind of, when we had our conversation, the same way, is we need those pairs in the special ed area, because we have to meet those special ed goals. It's a different standard, right? And so that's why we have to meet that, both separate funds that are kind of not just coming out of our general fund dollars, that would dictate that we could use it other ways.
Do we need to table it, or can we just?
Yeah.
It's just a discussion, so do we just, we don't take action, we stop to table it?
No, it just fails. Doesn't go forward if you don't take any action, so.
Yeah. So if you don't take, just kind of, we have to bring it back. I want to give a sort of, we have a surprise, it just, yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to table items.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight, thank you. Scotty?
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. All right, those two items will come back to us at a later date. Next up is the social services specialist salary. Mr. Scott, are you taking that one?
So, you know, it's, each, each year, we talk about looking at the subrates. We revisit all of our employees and try to look at balancing out what their salaries are compared to what other districts are doing, what there is in different areas of southeast Iowa. And so we really felt like there needed to be an incentive around education in this area, so we've kind of come back and revisited their salaries and looked at, you know, if someone is moving forward, with two criteria we're looking at, is if they have increased and got their masters, you know, the benefit to our students, there should be some benefit to the employee, as there is in most of our fields, as far as gaining additional education, just like teachers have. And then also looking at the years of experience within an educational setting. So I may have 20 years, but I haven't been working in any type of, with students, that's different, but with, with people who are working in an educational setting, that, so multiplier, if I had to say a word for it, we'd use the lane as far as years of experience as a multiplier, and then education as a multiplier. And so, but not just years of experience worked at wherever that wasn't, you know, connected with an educational setting. So we rebalanced that, there were a few changes that were submitted to you around personnel, and, you know, like anybody, like all of our employees, I wish we could pay more, but we feel like this is at least the first step in balancing that, and they provide, like all of our employees, they provide amazing, you know, resource for our students and our families. And those, currently their title, Corey is social services specialist, is that correct? That was a relabeling from a couple of years ago, but just in case, you know, those, they're, they're not social workers, because the social worker has a definite certificate and requirement to be able to be called a social worker, but they provide a lot of services, and when you think of that, when the public would think of a social worker, they provide a lot of those type of things, but that, they're not with that same degree. But yet, for us, from a resource for our, our students and our families, they provide amazing, you know, help for our families. Wanted to take questions on how we landed on anything.
Well, let's have a motion first. Is there a motion for this?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, okay. Comments or questions for Mr. Scott? So this comes, these are professionals, sir, what category are these individually in grade?
They're in the major groups, so for professional services.
And this increase comes out of the, just the general fund? I'll be honest, this is a tough one for me. It seems like we are hearing lots of requests at the table for adjustments. We want to look at this group, we want to look at this group, and, trust me, I want to pay everybody as much as we possibly can. But it just concerns me, because it seems like we are always getting a request for moving a group of people or moving someone up to make it more competitive, and if that's what we're doing, then that's, I suppose that's the game we have to play. The part, second part of this, if they are improving and getting a masters or whatever, I do feel like they definitely deserve some recognition for that. It's just they're a little bit having trouble. I'm not necessarily against it, I just, it causes me a little, it just, it's just a little concern for those reasons. They work out 190-day contract, so basically three more days than teachers, roughly.
Only, only one of them would make more than the teacher minimum, so everybody else is below that. And the total, I think, is about $11,500 total, and it's only, we're only talking about six people. There's a group, there, there's many employees that fall into that group, and we're only talking about six employees, so we're talking about 11, over $11,000, just, just so you, I mean, I hear exactly what you're saying.
Sure, they're not, and they're not certified to cover a class. They cannot be, not teachers, not teachers.
Can they, can they cover a class, Corey? Probably, they could, like anybody, but they can't be scheduled.
They have a sub-authorization, which I think, I can't speak confidently whether or not they do.
That's just my two and a half cents. I don't think anybody else has any comments.
And I'm on the other side of the coin in this discussion, which we have had. I see it more as a lane change. These are people that are going into our schools when we have, when we need extra support, when there's a student that's died of suicide, or that's lost their parents, that's affected. These are people that are, are dealing with those front-end issues. They haven't been recognized in our district for a while, so my other side of the coin is, I see that this is very fair. A formula was devised, it is a fair formula in my eyes, and I see it coming to us now as it being no different than a teacher doing a lane change, which we have throughout the school year. the school year.
And as we've discussed, that's not an unfair assessment at all. And I'm not necessarily against it, it just causes me a little bit.
Sure.
Causes me pause, it's, we get this, it's like we're getting these a lot, but the thing that drives me with this is that if they are improving and they're getting, moving from a bachelor's to a masters, then that, yes, that's much like a lane change and there's simply something for that, so.
We have a lot of years sitting right here in front of us, just with, in our district alone, for a couple of them.
Hopefully that's what we are, is getting to, is we're getting, trying to become more systematic about if this job opens tomorrow, what would we be paying somebody, what, where their years count for, what is your education for?
Right.
So it's a, there's kind of a, like a matrix of where we put people into, that's, in all of our areas, that's what we're trying to develop, so there's really a systematic approach to, to where we're putting somebody, but at the end of the day, the dollars are what the dollars are, so I hear that part of it too, but.
Well, then we know what we had.
And we took, we, we have a, we have a position here at the district office that we had to replace, and, you know, the cost of what someone makes doing that position and balancing that, and so we balanced that and, you know, someone accepted the position, but we had to balance amongst of what they were making to basically what we can pay, right? So we're constantly looking at that, because we know at the end of the day, there's just only so much to go around.
Yeah, and some years less than others.
So.
We have a lot of loyalty to our district with, some of this has been presented tonight, and that's nice to see that they were a greyhound, they chose to stay around, so.
Well, at the end of the day, it's not a huge sum, and I know that and I recognize that.
Understand.
It's just everything that comes together if we're looking in the future, you know, every little penny is going to count next year, so.
Yep.
Enough said, all in favor? Just, you comment?
Yes, it's, my mind, it's attracting and maintaining high quality professionals. If you have the money, we should do it. My favorite.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the superintendent report, Mr. Scott, what do you have for us tonight?
First of all, a couple of things, I did meet with our transportation director, Mr. Mason, we talked about with the heat that's going on. I stopped over again, you know, to say, hey, what are we doing because of the heat tomorrow? He was already way ahead of me, had already bought cases and cases of water, had it in the fridge cooled for the drivers, you know, for both tonight and for tomorrow, so he was ahead of the game there, so just kudos to him, but I was just checking on him and checking on our drivers, because it will be hot on those buses, especially tomorrow, and then it looks like it breaks after that. But I think we had the similar situation last year, so we kind of, kind of knew how to react to that and what we need to do. Also along the heat, I was working with Jay Huff, the athletic director, around practices for tonight. There is a chart that the Sports Association pushes, pushes out, tells you when you cannot practice, when you can practice limited, when you can practice with occasional breaks, and so he is monitoring that and we have been communicating all day, but we never got to the point where it was off limits to practice, but we did get to the point where it was, I believe it's practice for twenty minutes, take a break, practice twenty minutes, take a ten minute break, and you could do that three times. And so I think that's what they were planning on doing, and watching some game film or things like that for football, volleyball, we're inside, no problem, cross country, made the accommodations where they had to work out inside the building or on the actual high school campus where the track is, so we're not going to have people out running the side streets. And I'm trying to think of what else, there was golf, was probably hot, but again.
Yeah, limited holes, three holes tonight.
Yeah, they only did a little bit tonight. And so I only tell you that for tonight, that I wouldn't do this report all the time, but just that it is something we pay close attention to, and so we, we're in constant communication and, you know, and we actually at the middle school went down and limited their practice to only an hour tonight also, and tried to get that pushed out to parents so they would know all the things would be done sooner. I was a head coach, I would tell you, I hated when you lose practice because I feel like I have every practice, and then as an administrator and a superintendent, I would tell you that one practice is not going to kill, you know, miss anything, right, for us, and so we need to make sure the safety, and I think our coaches feel the same way. They were a hundred percent supportive of Jay, they were happy that they could just meet with their kids and be able to do very limited stuff for them, and so I think they all did a good job, yeah, with that. I did, I think Corey actually, and maybe even Steph, but I, I think all of us got up into all eight schools today, right? And, and saw the great, you know, they were just, it was moving like it was October, right, they were, it was just smooth and kids were walking around and stuff was happening in the classrooms and they were introducing everything, and I know we've been so consumed is the wrong word, but so, you know, focused on the high school, you know, all of our other schools are just, they're ready to roll, right? And the high school, even when I was there, kids were in the classrooms, I know they couldn't find some classrooms, but, but the, but the environment at the high school was the cafeteria when I was there during lunch, it was, it was just a great atmosphere, kids are feeling really, I think they're starting to feel the specialness of what the construction project's going to be, because they're seeing it, especially with the cafeteria, man, it just looks drastically different, they walk in, they're, you know, multiple people are telling me like, wow, like kids can't comment on, what in the world happened in here, right? It really is just some paint and a few things and, and adjusting to there. Corey, last week, Corey and Steph and I also, we went to every school after we had the, the day before and after the welcome back and just kind of talked them through any curriculum changes they may have seen this year, but it was also an opportunity for us to just, you know, communicate to them, you know, that the district office, maintenance, psychology, we work for them, the same message that I said at the welcome back, but did in a smaller environment, and then just, you know, that was the way they could ask questions and, where you're not in front of six hundred people, but maybe there's thirty people and they could ask questions or know that they can continue to present their ideas or concerns that they have and really just open that door again. So I thought those were, and we had some really good feedback and some ideas, actually some questions we got, took it, and we took those to the additional staff, it was a good clarification. But I always think those are good meetings for us to, you know, create an open dialogue. I, we all attended open houses between Corey, Steph and I, you know, I got to the stone and the high school, and I know they got to the elementary ones, but just, just enormous amount of people, or, I mean, just cars and people just everywhere, right? And people were just, you know, they just, the families are just really engaged with their kids and want to come in and want to walk the halls and so is, you know, and I thought from all of not having air conditioning last year to stone having to wait outside and the high school with, with such a last minute at the high school to get everything, and kudos to everybody that was over there and getting that done, they were just, they were wonderful, they were wonderful, everybody was getting around and getting to see what they needed to see and counselors were trying to schedule classes, so, so a lot of kudos to, to everybody in the buildings for those. We did get, I don't, I had sent you something earlier, but we did receive a ten thousand dollar grant from the American Rescue Plan for Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief, and it's really around our homeless children and youth funding stream, and so I just wanted to let you know, that was something we rewarded about three weeks ago, just haven't had a chance to bring it forward, but, you know, the goal is to, really to provide our McKinney-Vento families and students with respect and dignity they deserve in this challenging time by establishing a supply hub within their school, we're empowering them to select items they need such as backpacks, school supplies, clothing, hygiene kits, and, you know, without a special trip to an outside store. So, you know, just another from our grants and our opportunities that we continue to wrap our arms around our families and our students and all, everything that we get in this district, you know, we just, you could even talk about the food pantry, right? But we just provide so many things for our families and we just continue to do that, and there's not enough thank yous to go around to everybody and all the people that are involved with that, but it's a, it's a real help to all of our families. And I think that is all I have on my list for tonight, and just, yeah, it was a great first day, great first day, and it's just that, you know, when you're, it's just such a high energy when you get in the first day and it's just rolling, right? You just feel that energy of kids and, you know, they, they were excited to be back too, right? Summer is what the summer is and they were excited to be back, and, and the air conditioning for the most part was working everywhere. I found one, really one part of Black Hawk that I was at and threatened somebody right away, so, you know, in this oppressive, oppressive heat that we have, that's something that could be a problem, and they're right on top of it, our maintenance guys are doing free jobs, so, I think that's all I've got tonight. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I got one more thing. I got one more thing. So Steph, I got you at the top of the list and I almost forgot to do it, so I'd like to invite Steph up right now, just talk just briefly, I know I say briefly or whatever, but I want to give you a little overview because you'll be hearing from families around our new attendance, and so I thought it'd be important for her just to kind of explain there was a lot of work done over the summer and around our attendance, but again, most of it is the state requirements, right? What the state is requiring and how we're evaluated as a school, but a very good sized committee that got together and established a lot of things, and she's just going to hit a few of the key points, just wanted you to have some background knowledge, so if families are stopping you somewhere, you'd have an idea of, oh yeah, that's part of the new attendance law, so Steph, I'll turn the, turn it over to you.
So we did have a very good sized committee, we had nine people, nine administrators on our committee, and we met a couple of times in June, a couple of times in July, and met again in August to kind of finalize what we were going to need to put in our, in our handbooks. The change is, there was Senate File twenty-four thirty-five, and it talked a lot about chronic absenteeism, intruency, and about what schools were now going to be mandated to do in regards to attendance. I think one of the biggest changes is, in the past, you, you have your school year a hundred and seventy some, some days, and when a kid reaches that ten percent, you know, then, then they're chronic, right? So we go out to seventeen days or so, seventeen, eighteen days, and they become chronically absent. Well, the change in the law now says per grading period. So that means per trimester, we're going to be looking at chronic absenteeism and truency. Our trimesters average sixty days, a trimester, so what that means is after six days of a trimester, a student being absent, the state considers the student chronically absent. So, you know, the state of Iowa tracks our attendance and is also part of our state ranking and evaluation system, so just so you know, we are, we can, we're judged or evaluated on, on our attendance, so. So at ten percent of the trimester, a student is considered chronically absent. When a child is chronically absent, we're required to send a letter home, and that letter now per law has to be sent certified mail, so we have to send that certified. Once students miss fifteen percent of that trimester, which, well, it's about ten days, we have to, we send another letter and we have to have them come in for what's called a school engagement meeting. In the school engagement meeting, the state requires us to now fill out a new plan and it's called an absentee prevention plan. And that has to be done with each student who reaches that fifteen percent of absences within the trimester or each trimester as that goes. So in that plan, it's going to say, it's a few pages here, has obviously the name of the student, the date and things like that, but it talks about from this day forward, well, first of all, it's going to try to identify with the parents and the student the core reasons, what, trying to get to the root of why their absence, what, what do we think that is? And then the school is going to then share with the parents what actions they've taken. Is it talking to the student one-on-one about the importance of school attendance, is it the phone calls that we've made to the parents? Is it asking the student, you know, what is it that you need to, to be able to make it to school and, and how are we trying to help? And then we talk about from this day forward, it has to be written what the parents agree to do, what the student agrees to do, and what the school district agrees to do, to try to get the child on track into school. Once the students and the parents come and we have the student engagement meeting, as long as everyone holds up their end of the deal, student comes to school, I mean, that's, that's what we want, the goal is to come up with a plan that's going to help the student not continue to miss school. In the event that the student does continue to miss or the plan is not followed, that, then that is when, like we have in the past, have to notify the county attorney, so after that fifteen percent. And that's, that's the law, that's, that's the way that's written out. And then truency, the, just truency is defined as if a student misses twenty percent within the trimester. So just some changes, a little bit about when we're going to be sending letters and some of the language that we're using in the letters, but we just referenced, it's Senate File twenty-four eighty-five, and we just shared, the state of Iowa has now said, and they've given us the template to fill out, and so it's just going to be some changes, I think, for parents when they're called in for the student engagement meeting, because it is now, it's, it's required. They, they have to come, of course, we'll be flexible with, we, we don't want anyone to have to miss work, I mean, if it's before school, after school, or if they can, but we will work with parents to make it, so that they can make it to the meeting, but it will be required.
So a couple of things that I would say also is that, how many days can they without a medical note?
Six.
Six.
The six days.
In a year? Six in the, in the grade grid, right? So, and the seventh day, they'd be required to have a note, a medical note, and so we also have worked because we know some families won't be able to, that our nurse can also sign off on that, so our nurses could be people they could see, right? So there's a way, we're trying to meet the needs of our families. And so if, you talk about the ten day meeting, so if my son had migraines and I had a medical note on file, and it, you know, and they probably would have to update it every month or so, right? But then the ten day meeting is not required to do because it's a medical reason, right? So think of other medical reasons that I, you know, in your brain you could think of, right, that we may have, but we have to have a medical note on file. But for example, a family wins a cruise, right? And they're going to go on the cruise and they're missing five days and the kid actually had two other days, so that's not going to count and so he's going to, so it's going to be over the six days then, right? And so, or you missed a two, so even though it's like, hey, we're signing, parents are signing off on it, it's a family thing, it's, we won the lottery, we got this, my grandparents, we will be required to do the ten day meeting when they get to ten days, even if they called in and we knew exactly what it was. Now again, you're thinking, other reasons you missed class, is school related, the van goes somewhere, we have signed those, those don't count as days of absence because they have reported to school, they're reported to a location, when you take the group up to the competition, they're not marked absent for that, they're marked present and that. And so, you know, Steph did a ton of work also with our principals in redoing our codes to make sure our codes were accurately displaying what our kids are doing, right? So we didn't accidentally get dinged as being absent when we really weren't, right? And so.
And we made sure that all of our codes, what we found was different buildings had different codes, so now every building has the same codes. If you're in the nurse's office at Grimes, you're going to have the same code as if you're absent because you're just in the nurse's office at the high school, so all our codes are the same.
Yeah.
So student activities do not count?
Do not count.
Towards the absenteeism.
Yeah, so for football team, they have to leave early because of the bus, that's the only time we, and that's their mark, is with the coach, they're marked here. So just a little updates, I know it's going to be confusing if some families, they're going to be like, wait a minute, you know, I've always, but, you know, if they jump over that line, then they're going to jump over that line and, and we're required to, and so we just thought it'd be good at the meeting to make you aware and then, and then just also for people, you know, they're watching at home or whatever, so they're understanding that, you know, now, do we think attendance is extremely important? We absolutely do. We absolutely do, and that's why we spend a lot of time, that's why we did our attendance teams over a year ago before this happened, right? Which really helped us in getting planned, and I should say there were attendance teams before that, but we really re-engaged them last year and had committed last year, so that's helped us in this plan, because it's just, now we're just taking the next step, a lot of districts are starting from trying to find what attendance teams look like, they haven't had these, and so they're really struggling with a lot of this. And so it comes down to a little bit unexcused, and then the county attorney follow through, but we can say we submitted our paperwork to the county attorney, we get what was required of the school district as our requirement, and then whether the county attorney has too many people or that's, that's really not for us to say, whatever ours is just to follow through on what we're required to do. So just, I want to give you a good update, if you have any questions for Steph.
I appreciate you doing this and I appreciate you having her come to this, the policy committee talked about this extensively, so we've got to have a heads up, and it was, I was very concerned, you know, we have to take care of every avenue we can, the public know, so good, thank you for doing, another way we could get the public to realize, this is not something that the rural community school district is necessarily doing, it is a state thing we're having to follow, and everybody needs to be aware of it so we can minimize surprises, like you mentioned the cruise and then two or three days later.
And Michelle, you even sent something out on Parents Square to all our families.
Yes, I was going to say.
So we, yeah, we do want them to know because we don't want it to be a surprise.
Right.
But chronic absenteeism is a big problem and parents need to be on the ball.
Correct, and if you remember, just two weeks ago, on the twelfth, we passed two of those policies to be effective, so that was the second reading, that five oh one point seven in the, or five oh one point nine R one and five oh two point seven.
And that's the, just. And that's the, just the other part of that is just, we don't want kids to come to school if they're sick, right?
Right.
But that's the reason the doctor notes are required and if they can't do that, our nurse can sign off on that. And so that's why we want to make that because you can't just always get into a doctor. If anybody's ever tried to do that last minute, it's like, yep, I can see you next Thursday or something, right? It's like, okay. But, you know, it's just, it's so hard to get and you can go to emergency care, emergency room and wait forever, shite. And, but our nurses are, want to be available, want to be a resource to families also so we can mark it as a medical, you know, excuse.
Right. So here's your notice to start planning Thanksgiving break, Christmas break and spring break vacation.
Yeah, expect a letter to mail.
So thank you, Steph.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions for Mr. Scott? Not aware of any committee reports for this evening unless I missed a memo somewhere, which is a terrible possibility. So moving to board communications, Mr. Anderson.
I'm going to keep it short this evening. Good to hear all the first day good news stories that we're hearing. It was great to hear the vibe update, giving students a lot of options to complete school however they need to. I'd like to hear more of that. Happy new school year. That's it for me.
Ms. Anderson.
I just kind of wanted to shout out our maintenance department. My son worked there this summer and I just think that we have a great work environment down there. They really prepare our kids to be to work what true working environment should be, teaching them values and what a good work environment should be. I know he really enjoyed working there and he worked all the way up through late Friday night. So I just want to let them know how much I appreciate them and all that they do for us.
Ms. Burghoffler.
I'm in agreement about the open house. It was exciting. Everyone was thrilled to be there. And just wanted to say a thank you from the, our dual enrolled students and homeschool students, that every single person that I talked to, who then asked people that they knew, basically every single person heard from a district or from an admin office. And they were so excited and said their students felt prepared, scheduled and more at ease going into those open houses, knowing what to expect. And so all that does is then build confidence for like, I can do another class or telling people about it, like it's a very easy experience to dual enroll. So thank you for the effort, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Scott. Thank you very, very much. Also wanted to say thank you for acknowledging the heat today. That is the first I've ever seen. My nine-year-old was playing state in 110 degree weather and it was ridiculous. So today it was so wonderful to get a message, cross-country, running 20 minutes. So as a parent, you're like, all right, there's just, the communication has been incredible on every single avenue with every school. So thank you for that. Thanks for working. Parent Square is the greatest tool to have it all in one place. Done. That's all.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I'm extremely pleased with the new cell phone policy at Edstone and I hope that that will be rolled out in the future at the high school. That's all I have.
Ms. McVay.
Well, I can speak about the cell phone policy at the high school because both of my kids, especially my senior, said, well, cell phone policy has changed a little bit at the high school. I said, good. So they're moving in the right direction there. All right, I got a lot, so I'm going to make sure that my, do my little notes. Of course, happy first day of school to everyone. Wouldn't be possible without our transportation department, so shout out to them while you're still sleeping. They're getting on those buses to make sure that our students get to their schools safely. So thank you. Maintenance and custodial staff, I went through the building, VHS on Monday. They were working hard, I mean, dusting and cleaning windows and vacuuming, knowing that Tuesday they're going to have to do it again, but to keep up on it. Wednesday, open house rolled around, not one complaint from anybody did I hear. I got lots of compliments. We know it's not perfect, but hey, it, this looks terrific. So everyone's excited. Sports teams, just a shout out to our coaches. If you've never been involved in some of the sports, you don't know where these kids play. And I am new to the golf world, completely new to the golf world. They, they're playing at some prestigious golf courses. I mean, they played this Saturday at TCP Deer Run. That's huge. I mean, our high school kids are playing on that course. They played at Blue Top Ridge in Riverside. Amazing, beautiful course.
Hate those greens, hate those greens.
Yeah.
I'm just going to tell you right now, I don't like putting on those greens, but a beautiful course.
Yes, yes, the greens, the bunkers were, you know, very challenging, the water hold hazards, that was fun. But our coaches go over and beyond to try to get these kids different places to play and prestigious places to play. And that's great. Swim meets, they, they've swam at some pretty awesome swimming pools. Our girls wrestling has been involved in some tournaments in some bigger districts involved in that. It's terrific. So behind the scenes, our coaches are trying to give our students a great experience and kudos to them. Same in the music department, our band played at WIU last year. What an amazing opportunity. So shout out to all of them. Again, appreciation with the, the heat, something that we usually don't think about. We think about the winter weather, but not the heat. So great communication from the coaches there. I know Mr. Huff has worked really hard to make sure that our students can still practice, but safely. And I don't know if you've been reading the donations lists lately and I know more still coming in, but it is phenomenal to see the community providing backpacks and pencils and cleaning supplies, Clorox wipes, Kleenexes, all of that. So any entity out there that's donated, thank you very much for that. Our staff and our students will use that, so. Okay, that's everything.
Are you sure?
I'm, I'm sure. I checked all my little boxes, so over to you.
All right. I don't think that's quite that.
Mr. Presidente.
Kudos to the maintenance and custodial staff in the entire district. Our buildings look phenomenal, but I have to second Ms. McVay. The effort put into getting VHS ready for open house was nothing short of monumental and they pulled it off. And so much so that I texted Mr. Scott that, like, I don't know how they did it. I don't know what kind of wizard, wizardry they had available, but that building looks really nice for open house and it.
Five days prior, you're a little nervous.
They had, yes, I was just a tad nervous.
Just want to make sure.
I, I don't think anybody opened doors that they weren't supposed to open. Maybe it was like Pandora, they were afraid to open a door, but that's okay. It, it actually came off really well. Kudos to the administrative team at the high school. They all were, were doing everything that they needed to do. I mean, they above and beyond is the best, it's a minimalist saying, but above and beyond. Up to and including meeting staff there on the weekends to let them in because the staff keys weren't quite set up yet. So they were letting staff members in that needed to work and wanted to work on the weekends. Just absolutely phenomenal effort. IT department, holy cow, getting the IT setup at the high school too. Just a phenomenal effort. Five stars all around, we're just very lucky to have such dedicated people, so please share that all with them.
Greg, how much can I say about September 3rd without getting into any trouble?
Excuse me, September 10th.
No, September 3rd, the open house.
Oh, the open house, yes.
The open house, yeah. Yeah. Say that.
So please be mindful, a week from tomorrow, 5 o'clock at Al Williupold, there's an open house where we're going to be discussing the vote that will take place on September 10th. I implore you to please come to the open house if you have questions, if you have concerns, if you want to see what this is all about and what the excitement is about, please come to Al though, Tuesday the 3rd, meet with board members, meet with the architects. This is a truly once phenomenal opportunity to get, to do something tremendous. So I welcome anybody and everybody to come to that open house on the 3rd from 5 until 7?
Five, I think they have 5 to 6:30.
5 to 6:30, okay. But I'll stay till 7 if there's people.
Yeah, I want to talk.
So we hope that you'll do that. The last item I have was a email that came to the board and just before tonight's meeting. And I asked for permission to share this. It was from Kathy Menke.
Oh, yes.
The nurse, one of the nurses who was here at the last meeting to talk about the immunizations and the efforts that there were being made to do that. So she gave me permission, I'm going to read it as is written. Hello, everyone. I don't mean to brag, but I just have to share with you all that we discussed, as we discussed immunizations at the board meeting, I wanted to give you an update. Last week I was down to 24 kiddos still needing required immunizations to legally be allowed to start school. This consumed my time last week reaching out, asking parents how we could help make this happen as well as numerous summer hours devoted to it. That number is extremely low compared to previous years, exclamation mark. This morning I had one student noncompliant, actually had nine, but eight had their appointments scheduled, so we were able, able to allow them to attend school. The one noncompliant student has since resolved that issue and has an appointment for next Wednesday. I have never had this in my now 18th year in the district. I do not take credit for this on my own. Paula Gerhart, Mr. Murphy worked very tirelessly while the students were in the sixth grade getting letters sent out and holding an end of the year immunization claim. Paula has helped tremendously by picking up extra hours to assist as well. And Lisa Magenti at the Des Moines County Public Health Department helped numerous walk-in clinics and has accomplished, has accommodated many parents' schedules to get them in, sent out letters herself and held a clinic at our open house. She goes above and beyond for each of us every year and we could not do this without her. A shout out to Michelle for helping navigate Parent Square and posting on Facebook every time I asked. She's awesome. Mr. Clark allowed me a much needed time for Paula and I to make this a success. She thanks the board members and also the parents who heard the issue and followed up. So I wanted to share that. I thought that was, what an uplifting email to get before I walked in the building tonight. So that was great to see. So thank you to our community and thank you to our parents for making that important. With that, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.